We're going to call the meeting to order. This is the City of Kingman Meeting of the City Council, Tuesday, July 18th. It is 5:02 and we will be having a call to order and roll call by Clerk Meredith.
Mayor Watkins is excused this evening. Vice Mayor Samley.
Here.
Councilmember Pat. Councilmember Savage.
Here.
Councilmember Scott Staley.
Present.
Councilmember Walker will be joining us via Zoom. Councilmember Ward.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Today's invocation will be given by Pastor Michael Bell of the Kingman Nazarene Church, and after that will be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Counselor Staley, will you lead us in the pledge, please? Please stand. We do not have our pastor, so if you'll just bow your heads, we'll have a moment of silence. All right. The first item on the agenda is an appointment to the Economic Development Advisory Commission. The Economic Development Advisory Commission currently has two vacancies. One application from John W. Bennett has been received and provided for review to the council liaison, city manager, and staff. Residency and voter registration status has been verified. Staff is recommending appointment of John W. Bennett to a term ending on December 31st, 2026. I believe Counselor Savage, this is your commission.
Yes, it is. I had an online, or not an online, phone call interview with Mr. Bennett. He was very, very knowledgeable. Part of our conversation led to some questions that ended up him joining me in a meeting with Supervisor Lincoln Felter, so I highly recommend Mr. Bennett. Unfortunately, he couldn't be here today. He had a meeting in Havasou.
All right. Would you like to make a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to accept John Bennett on the EDAZ commission.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed, same sign. All right. Congratulations to Mr. John W. Bennett. Thank you for applying. Now we'll have item number two, Call to the Public, Comments from the Public. Those wishing to address the council should fill out request forms in advance. Comments from the public will be restricted to items not on the agenda, with the exception of those on the consent agenda. There will be no comments allowed that advertise for a particular person or group. Comments should be limited to no longer than three minutes. The council may not respond to speakers during Call to the Public. The council may direct the city manager to study the matter or request that the matter be placed on a future agenda. And we do have a couple of folks that wish to address council. I have Mark Gaworski. If you'd please come up to the podium.
Good evening, council members. I have an issue with the code enforcement of trash. I live in downtown here and the street is between two streets, our address streets of Gold Conda and Gold Road Ave. The people are starting to use it as a dump site now. Some of the trash has been there for a year and a half. And I have some videos that I'm going to send to city clerk that are pretty disturbing of the looks of this. And I'd like to see if I some way get somebody to enforce the codes. I have talked to neighborhood watch officers about it, and they said it's a work in progress, you know, and it takes time. But that was in April and it's still there. So years ago, when I could, I used to clean up stuff that was thrown out. And at one time when they had dumpsters along Topeka Street, free just my neighbor and I used to haul couches, chairs, all kinds of stuff, and put them in there, just go around in the neighborhood and keep cleaning up. Unfortunately, I can't do that any too good anymore. So I'm asking you if some could be done.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Gaworski. We'll refer this to the city manager, Mr. Foggan, to be in contact with you. Thank you.
I'm going to send the videos to her then.
Thank you, sir. All right. Next up, we have Pam Tappan. You'll approach the podium, please.
Great timing. Good evening, mayor and council members and staff. My name is Pam Tappan. I like to solve problems instead of just complaining. That is why I volunteered to be on the Clean City Commission. However, after finding out the commission had been stripped of all power, only met four times a year, and never received any guidance from city council, I decided my time was better spent pursuing other endeavors and I resigned. To show time I was on the commission, I did find out several important things. Number one, no one at city council, or city hall communicates. The city is very understaffed and the city needs more money. Now the reason I am here. Our city neighborhoods are starting to look like a third world country. Did you know that in 2022, the city had 981 calls for code enforcement? Of those 981 calls, only eight made it to our city attorney's office, and those complaints were dismissed. We need a new direction in the city. I have been told by the city manager, Foggan, and city attorney Cooper that the city is proactive when it comes to code enforcement. Prove it. I've been looking at the same junk, debris, blighted houses, abandoned cars for the past four and a half years. Believe me when I say the residents are tired of having our great city look like this. We are making downtown beautiful. Now it's time to make our neighborhoods beautiful. Being that we are spending $7 million on downtown, let's suspend the facade improvement sign and mural program. The money on spent for 2023 and 2024 should give you over $100,000 to hire more code enforcement personnel. To see how proactive the city really is, I am now filing 15 code enforcement complaints. I would like to see a number assigned to these so that I can follow up. Mayor and council members, this is your responsibilities and yours alone. You set the priorities, you set the budgets. Now listen to the residents and help clean up our neighborhoods. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Tappan. We're going to go ahead and refer this to manager Foggan and get you some contact. Moving on to the consent agenda, all matters listed here are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. Does anybody have anything that they would like to remove from the consent agenda? All right. I'm going to remove item G from the consent agenda. I have a conflict of interest. It does name my employer, so I'm going to recuse myself. And because I'm conducting the meeting, I'm going to hand it over to Counselor Staley. First of all, we're going to entertain a motion to approve Consent Agenda Minus Item G.
I'll make that motion.
Move a motion?
I'll second that.
Second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed, same sign? All right. Now I will turn the meeting over to Counselor Staley for item G.
Can I just interrupt real briefly? I think we just need to acknowledge that Councilman Walker is on with Zoom, because I know you said he was going to be there, but he is now present. Oh, I didn't hear it for the record.
Councilmember Walker has joined the meeting via Zoom.
I'm sorry, I missed that, if you had said it earlier.
Item G, approval of resolution number 5433, final subdivision plat approval for Kingman Crossing Track 1993-D. A request from Pioneer Title Agency, Inc., trustee under trust 9324, property owner and Mojave Engineering Associates, Inc., project engineer, for the approval of a final subdivision plat improvement plans for Kingman Crossing Track 1993-D. The subdivision is proposed to have 61 residential lots on 15.04 acres and is located west of Santa Rosa Drive and south of Split Branch Drive. The subdivider has also offered a property escrow assurance agreement to assure the completion of all required subdivision improvements. The agreement will allow the final plat to be recorded, but will not allow any individual lots to be sold until all required subdivision improvements are completed and accepted by the council. This will need to occur within 24 months unless extended by council resolution. Once all of the improvements are completed, they will need to be accepted by the council for city maintenance and the property escrow assurance agreement can be then can be released. Staff approves, staff recommends approval. Any discussion or questions for staff? Would someone like to make a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Okay. All in favor to approve resolution number 5433, please say aye.
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 Any ayes? Nope. The motion passes.
Thank you, Counselor Staley. Moving on to old business, we have none. Moving on to new business, review and recommendation for exception to connect to sewer. Staff has recommended, staff has received a request for a sewer variance from Donald Ammerman for a parcel located on Butler Avenue east of Jimmy Drive. The applicant plans on obtaining a building permit to install a single-family residence on the property. The municipal utility commission heard the request on June 22nd, 2023, and voted to recommend approval of the variance by a vote of four to zero, with the condition that the new building be plumbed so that it can connect to sewer when it becomes available in the future. Staff recommends approval of the variance with the following condition. The new building shall be plumbed so that it can connect to the sewer when it becomes available in the future. Mr. Allred.
Good evening. As mentioned, this is a review for an exception to the utility regulations to extend sewer to a property. The property is located east of Jimmy, east of Jimmy Drive and on Butler Avenue. It's there highlighted in yellow on the screen. The parcel is within 500 feet of sewer, so normally the requirement would be that the owner would have to extend sewer to the property. There's an existing 24-inch sewer main on Jimmy Drive. It's about 330 feet away from the property. The unique circumstance with this property or with the sewer main is currently there is no flow in the sewer. This was done as part of a region-wide project to serve sewer in the entire region, and the majority of the flows are going to be coming east from the eastern part of town on the other side of the tracks. So when we were looking at this, we felt it wouldn't make any sense to have just one connection tie into the sewer main. The closest active sewer main to this property is approximately 4,000 feet away. So one connection trying to go 4,000 feet to an active sewer main, we felt would likely turn septic and become a maintenance issue for us. So normally, I'm up here recommending that the extension be made, but in this case, I think it's warranted that an exception be granted because of the unique circumstance with the existing sewer system. So that is our recommendation. I can answer any questions you might have, and I know the applicant is here if you have any questions for them as well.
Counsel, does anyone have any questions for Mr. Allred?
I have one.
Counselor Staley?
So this sewer line is to service the east bench, is that right?
Yeah. The primary, I mean, it's going to serve this area as well, but the bulk of the flows are going to be coming from the east bench.
So the million-dollar question is, when will this line be ready to service this area of town? How much has to happen on the east bench in order to make this line viable for this section off of northern?
I think we would want a steady flow. It's hard to say how many connections, but, you know.
Years?
Huh?
Years?
It could be. It just depends on when things start to go. But if we're thinking only the east bench, yeah, I would say that's still a couple of years out.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Anybody have any questions for the applicant? All right. I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion that we accept that.
With the condition?
Yeah. With the condition.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign? All right. Motion passes. Thank you. Moving on to department reports. Drainage master plan capital projects. I'm assuming that's you too, Phil?
It is.
All right. It's all yours.
So some time ago, there was some discussion about the stormwater rate study, and one of the counselors was asking questions or thought it would be good for us to review the projects that were contained within the rate study. So in preparation for that, I thought it would just be good to do a quick summary of the stormwater master plan that we prepared. And then I'll just briefly describe the process that we went through and how the projects that ended up in the draft rate study occurred. So back a few years ago, we went through the process to update our drainage master plan, and it was finalized in 2020. And the purpose of this master plan was to identify flooding hazards and drainage problems within the city. And also for some of these areas to develop alternatives to mitigate the drainage issues. And as we went through this, there was an opportunity for project stakeholders to participate in the development of this plan, which also included some public participation, but it also included participation from the county, their flood control district, and a few others. And so the outcome of this master plan, there's a few things that we got out of it. One of it was an area-wide hydrologic and hydraulic model showing stormwater runoff within the city for different storm events that we look at. And so that's a real useful tool for us because it kind of gives us a litmus test of when development comes in, we can see if their analysis is matching up with ours. But also, it greatly helps us identify areas that have existing hazards, and so we can provide greater information to the public. So as we went through the process, we developed a list of initially 87 projects. And as we went through that, we whittled it down to focus on 15 projects. And that went through a process where we had different weighting criteria and whatnot, and whittled it down to 15. And the purpose of identifying these 15 is to come up with some conceptual engineering on potential solutions. It's important to note that these 15 projects did not include some of the other projects that the city was already looking at. We wanted to maximize our consultants' time or the capacity that they had, so I just want to make a point that these 15 projects that I'm referring to don't include some of the other ones that we had already started engineering on. And so with those 15 projects, we had the consultant do a 30% design to kind of just roughly give us a conceptual idea of what it would take to mitigate the issue. And with that, they gave us a cost estimate. So the whole purpose of me kind of mentioning this is to demonstrate the need that the city has for drainage mitigation. Regardless of what projects are in the rate study, we have others that are just right behind them that if for some reason we didn't want to do one, I've got 80 more, right, that we can add to it. So I just want to, that's part of the reason why I wanted to mention that. So with the stormwater rate and the projects that went in there, we came up with a list of eight projects. And these projects primarily were areas that we thought would solve some problems for us. And the reason why we even took our list down even further is we're just trying to get the overall cost to a level that would make it palatable for a stormwater rate, if that makes sense. So there's a lot of projects out there, but we just picked a few to include. So this is the list of the projects that we have that were included, that were presented in the draft study. And I'll just go through each one real quick and explain what it is that we're trying to do. So the first project is the airway project, and it's primarily a project to channelize flows over near the White Cliffs Middle School area. And included in that project is a detention basin, so that it'll help attenuate some of the flows that are going through there. And ultimately, we, the project also includes a box culvert going underneath airway so that when we improve airway for the Rancho project, we won't have to worry about flows crossing that grade on the roadway. So this project will help alleviate the flooding that's been experienced at the White Cliffs Middle School. The Bull Mountain Interim Channel Project is a project near Stockton Hill Road and the movie theater. This is a project that's, overall, this area has had a project on the books for a long time. There's a lot of drainage that goes through here, a lot of challenges that the city experiences. So this interim channel is to just build a channel in the area highlighted in blue there to basically help, we're having some issues with flooding near the Box Culvert and Stockton Hill Road, so this will kind of help mitigate that flooding that's occurring at that section of roadway. And we also know that there's some other businesses that have been struggling with flooding in that area when there's large storms. So this is the Bull Mountain Interim Project. The Hillcrest Drainage Improvements is just a little bit further south over by the Safeway Shopping Center. This is a relatively small project, but it would allow us to intercept flows before they get to Stockton Hill Road, and it would divert those flows into a channel that we have just a little bit south and east of the intersection of Hillcrest and Stockton Hill. When we did the repaving and waterline improvements on Stockton Hill, we actually added another culvert to that crossing in anticipation of knowing that we wanted to intercept flows and get it to this culvert here. So it's something that we've been strategically going as we have funds. And so this is a project that ultimately will help reduce flows getting into the shopping center. The shopping center, the shops south of Safeway have been flooded in the past. Another project is accomplishing some detention upstream of the Eighth Street Underpass. And so this project is basically to help reduce the amount of flow that's getting to that underpass. I think we all know that if there was an issue with the trains and they both stopped, this underpass is the only access to certain parts of downtown. And so... And so basically, what this project would do is do a little bit of work at the culvert on the north side of Annie Divine, and basically it would help more ponding occur. Basically, we'd slow it down a little bit so that we're getting a little bit of stormwater detention in that area. And so that is the Eighth Street project. Harrod Avenue Basin upgrades, this is off of railroad streets. If any of you have driven by there, there's two large basins. When it rains, primarily the west, what we call the west basin is the only one that fills up, and there's a culvert that goes underneath the railroad that ties directly into that west basin. So what we would do is we would build a, we call it a weir, and it would allow us to pond more water and have more of it go into the east basin. And potentially, this could add about eight acre-feet of stormwater storage for us, and it would reduce the flows that are crossing underneath the railroad in Annie Divine. And in that old part of town, there is a lot of flooding that happens through there, so this would help attenuate that. The Eastern Street improvements, primarily, these are just the drainage components of the entire Eastern Street project. So obviously, we've broken this project out into phases, but the drainage improvements are going to be box culverts. There's two, one at airway, another one by the freeway. A lot of storm drain installed, some curb and gutter to direct flow. And then also at Brody and Eastern, we have quite a bit of storm drain there to help mitigate a lot of the at-grade flooding that occurs in that area. So the primary goal for the drainage improvements on Eastern, Eastern's right now is a major road to get us to the other side of town, and so we want to make sure that we can traverse it during a storm and not have to worry about any flooding hazards, especially for emergency services as they're responding during a storm. The Western Avenue Storm Drain Project is between Sycamore and Calumet, so it's over by the hospital, the K R M C campus. And this project primarily is to intercept flows that are reaching Western. And Western right now is taxed with a lot of drainage, and so this would intercept it, put it into a storm drain. There's an existing storm drain in Sycamore that this would tie into, and so the overall goal of this project is to relieve the stress of drainage on Western with the ultimate goal of trying to make sure that no flows make it onto the K R M C campus. There's been times where it has, the streets overflowed, it's gone into their parking lot, and I heard at one point in time, it made it into their generator room. And so we'd like to do the best we can to mitigate any flows for the hospital in that The, I think this is the last project, is the Shane Channel. So this is out in the Camelback area. There's a lot of drainage that comes off of the mountains there adjacent to Shane, and there are some homes that back up onto Shane that have been flooded in the past. And so what this project is, is to install a channel on the east side of Shane, and basically route flows south towards Potter Avenue. At some point, those flows would go into an underground box culvert, and it would discharge into the Camelback Wash, which is right there between Christie and, well, I can't read that. But anyway, there's a big existing wash that we would route all of those flows to. So with that, those are the projects that were included in the draft study. Certainly can answer any questions that you might have.
Counsel, do you have any questions for Phil? Counsel Staley, we'll start with you.
Okay, I have a list of questions, so, sorry.
I'll do my best.
Are any recharge basins included in these projects?
I'm going to say... The only one that I'm aware of is the airway project. The Harrod, they're big basins, but we've done some geotechnical investigation there, and it's real rocky, so we're not sure that we're going to be able to get much infiltration. But the airway project does have an infiltration basin incorporated into it.
Okay. We, it seems like there's missed opportunities here, though. This is a lot of water, and for a while, there we made it a priority to do as many recharge, to add as many as we could as we're capturing this water. Is there an opportunity to add more, or it just, why aren't there more?
Well, it's a balance, right? One of the criteria that we looked at when we were scoring the projects was the recharge option. We gave greater weight to other issues like flooding of houses and stuff like that. And so I agree, we want to recharge as much as possible. I think our focus with these projects is more trying to reduce flooding and damage to property and whatnot.
Okay. You had stated that you have cost estimates, but you did not give us that number.
The...
The 30%, you have an idea what it'll cost for all 15 of these?
I do, but the costs for these projects were previously provided in the rate study.
Okay.
So you have all those costs of these eight projects that I just presented that were in the rate study.
Do you know what that is off the top of your head?
Off the top of my head, no, Tina might. I think she's on the call, but it's a lot.
Yeah, I imagine it is. Okay, I will go back and look at the rate study. And I can't even read my handwriting on that one. One of the questions I was wondering is if we approve the fee that would go on the water bill every month to pay for these projects, would we then be able to finance all of these and do them all at once since we have a new source of income coming in to pay for these? Or would we have to wait until we save up enough funds to start going project by project?
I think that might be a Tina question, but my recollection is it would probably be a combination. There might be some financing that we can do upfront. I don't know that we could do all of them all at once.
Okay. Oh, and my other question was, we do have other stormwater projects, and you had mentioned there were already some in the works. Do these 15 take precedence over those, or are those still moving along, and these are waiting for funding?
So the ones that I just presented, the eights, include some of those 15 and some of the ones that we were already working on.
Okay.
So...
So still going, okay. I think that is actually it.
Okay.
Any other questions? Yep, Counsel Ward?
The other question, on this Bull Mountain Channel, does that channel now exist?
It does not. We have a box culvert at Stockton Hill Road, but we do not have a channel that, it's just all kind of congregates there. The Public Works Crew has done a little bit of work in the southern portion, let me find it real quick. I don't know if you can see the cursor, the Public Works Crew did a little bit of work here just to try to divert some of the flow a little bit further north.
Isn't that the worst where all that construction debris and piles of dirt are? Toward the back of it?
I know there's a couple piles of something back here, but what I was saying is, we've done a little bit of just maintenance here to try to encourage the water to stay away from this development here.
But if we're doing this, that is a city project, right?
This channel is eventually going to be a city project. I think it's in the five-year CIP, but I think it's programmed out in the future.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else have any questions? My biggest question was asked by Counsel Staley, and that's why not more recharge? We have all this water that's flowing and flooding, and we're diverting, and I just, the recharge is something that should be on our minds. And then as far as funding, do we get any funding for these projects from the county? The county participates somewhat.
So there's a little bit of money that we get each year from the flood control district. It's around $500,000 to $600,000 a year, roughly. And so some of the funds for this would be paid from that, but it's certainly not enough to cover everything.
Sure. That was all the questions that I had. Thank you for your presentation. All right, moving on to item number seven, announcements by mayor, council members, and city manager. We do not have a mayor present. We do not have a city manager present. Carl, do you have anything?
I am not the city manager, and I am not on that list.
I know. I just thought I'd throw it out there. Counsel Savage?
I have nothing to report tonight.
Counsel Ward? Counsel Staley? Counsel Walker?
I have nothing, nothing tonight.
All right, perfect. I just had a couple of things. We attended the groundbreaking ceremony for the downtown Beale Street infrastructure project. I know most all of the council was there, I'm pretty sure, and we're excited to see that project going. I also will be attending on behalf of the mayor tomorrow, the tri-city council meeting in Lake Havasu, starts at 11:30 in the Lake Havasu Chambers. And then lastly, there is a celebration of the Angel Delgado Museum exhibit, and that is happening, they're opening that on July 27th. It's a Thursday at 11:00 a.m. over at the Powerhouse Museum, so I wanted to make sure that everyone knew about that. Requests for future reports and updates. Counsel Savage?
No.
Counsel Ward? Counsel Staley?
I do have a couple. I would like to request that in the next council meeting, that we have an executive session with Andrew McGuire. Specifically, I have questions about the contract with the KDP manager, and I also have questions about the Kingman Crossing contract. So I'd like to be able to discuss those with him in the next meeting. And then I also would like to request a council workshop in August to discuss improvements to our process for building and construction. The first thing is I would like to discuss A R S 9-835 and to consider adopting a policy that would give review and approval timelines. I would like to also discuss, item number two, is to discuss the creation of a policy on the final steps of approving and recording the final plat of a subdivision. My third item is to adopt an early permitting process that mimics the county's. And my fourth item is to discuss the issues with the new code and a plan for correcting those issues and moving forward.
What new code?
Our, excuse me, our new building code. If you remember, in the workshop that we had, there were several, there were quite a few items. I know Sean already has an ongoing list. I'd like to see his list and then talk about how we can mitigate those issues. And then I would imagine that other council members probably would want to add to that, so if we could just get a date and a request out to everybody to add to that. Those were my items.
Thank you, Counsel Staley. Counsel Walker?
I was just going to request an update on Rancho Santa Fe interchange, just like a checklist of what's been checked off and what still needs to be checked off, so we're all on the same page. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Counsel Staley?
That reminds me, I have one more. If we, I'd like to request either an item or an email to the council with an update of where we are with the redesign of the bridge for Rancho Santa Fe. How much longer? Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Staley. All right, I have nothing. I think staff will be busy. With that, I'm going to adjourn the meeting.